It's not working. Can I borrow this just for a second?
Yeah.
Seven sixty-three, three eighty-nine. Why isn't this working? Seven sixty-three, okay. No, same as Scott was entered, correct? What's going on?
Okay.
Morning.
Damn, you should order. Hello.
Oh, oh, seven sixty-three, eight thirty-nine.
Seven sixty-three, eight thirty-nine.
Eight thirty.
Oh, no, no, I'm going back to the first one.
Oh.
Okay. Let me start, eight-one-three, let's have a look at it. You're right. Thank you, yeah. You got it, baby.
Hi Pam.
Hi, how are you Nick? What's up?
Hey, yourself?
Doing okay. Keeping busy.
That's easy.
That's so easy. What's new with you? I hope that Hope actually won't, Hope?
Yes.
Hope, where are you supposed to not be here?
I just got back Saturday. Thank you.
Wonderful?
Oh, it was wonderful. I really enjoyed myself, thank you.
I really wish you would. Not because we don't want you here, but because you never go away. And you need to be friendly.
I know, it was really refreshing.
But we are your family, you want to be here.
That's right, you're my town family, that's right.
The one day I took off from work, I came to visit you and you weren't there. That's right.
Oh, very disappointed. You left me a message, though.
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Is that Tom?
Yes.
And Marcella? Oh, nice to see you. Hi Scott.
Hi Hope.
Hi.
Hold on, hold on, shh. Hi. Hi, everybody.
How are you, Jill? How's your husband? Good? Just say good. Don't let go. She's leaving.
And there is. Kathy's here.
Hi Hope.
Hi Kathy. Hi Lindsay. Nice seeing all these faces. Pam, where's the dog?
Oh God. Um, I don't have a cat right now.
Hello, Tom.
Way in the back, there's a cat.
Oh, okay.
I think we have a quorum. Hi Jill.
Hi, sorry about that stuff. Oh, you know what, let me go in the other room, so it's not so... Right.
Don't forget to stream the right town.
Are we ready to rock and roll? Where's our administrator?
We're ready.
Right here.
Oh. I thought I saw her.
Do my thing.
Oh, hiya, Helen's with us also.
All right. Who's running the meeting? Is that Nava running the meeting?
Yes, she is.
Supervisor, we're here now live on Facebook.
Okay. Ready to rock and roll. Okay, welcome everybody to the Town Council Meeting of the Town of Rye. Tuesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance. To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
By the way, you know, the original pledge to not have under God. You know when that was put in?
Fifty-seven.
Nope. Close Tommy.
It wasn't it during World War Two?
Nope.
No.
Nineteen fifty-four.
What was the impetus?
I don't know, it was...
I remember it was an anti-communist movement. This is a...
That could very well be because of the godless communists. I remember, I was, I was a little kid, very little kid. Uh, Hope, Madam Clark, welcome home.
Thank you. Shirley, Councilperson Jill Axelrod.
Present.
Councilperson Lindsay Ann Jackson.
Present.
Councilperson Pamela Jaffe.
Present.
Councilperson Thomas Nardi.
Here.
And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Here, thank you. We have minutes from May eighteenth and a special meeting on June eighth. Unless somebody has additions or corrections, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
Sound moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. Our first item is the annual audit report for 2020. Jeff Shaver and Scott Oling will present it to us. It will take a short amount of time. They just finished presenting at the end of the Rye Town Park Commission meeting earlier. And ran very quickly over to our meeting. And after that, we will open our public hearing.
Sure. Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor. Welcome all, good evening. I'm Scott Oling, a partner at PKF O'Connor Davies. I'm joined tonight by my partner Jeffrey Shaver, who is in charge of the Town of Rye Audit. We have a very brief presentation to go over the results of the 2020 Annual Financial Statement Audit that we conducted for the town. The brief agenda for tonight's discussion, I will give you a quick overview and what is required from your auditor as regards communications. And then Jeff's going to take you primarily through your general fund, which is your primary operating fund, and go through all the revenues, expenditures, and your fund balance. And then we'll conclude with discussing some debt service obligations that you as the town have. So on the next slide, basically, you know, at this point in time, as of tonight, our audit, you know, is complete. The financial statements that we're going to discuss the highlights of with you tonight have been reviewed by those in management at the town. And they have concurred with the information that is about to be presented. Our part of the report is the auditor's opinion. We've issued what's known as an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the town's finances. That's the highest form of assurance that an auditor can provide their client. It basically says that we believe your financial statements fairly present what happened in the town during the 2020 fiscal year. We found no material weaknesses in any of your internal controls that generate the financial information in your system, so that's obviously a very good thing. And more importantly, we also found no instances of fraud as we were conducting the audit. Your responsibility, and you are known as those charged with governance, is that you have to ensure that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, or US GAAP, that you maintain those internal controls that I just mentioned, that you comply with, whether it's state laws or federal laws and regulations, that you comply with all those in all of your activities, that you do provide us all the information that we seek. And you have done that, because if you didn't, it would be a scope limitation on the audit and would be a problem. So that did not occur. And of course, as the Town Council, you are responsible for setting the proper tone at the top for all the folks who work for the town and conduct the town's business. So with that, I'm going to have, turn it over to Jeff now. And he's going to take you through the important part, which is the results of operations for 2020. Jeff?
Thank you Scott. I'm going to start with the 2020 general fund revenues and expenditures compared to budget. This is in highly summarized form. You'll see this is a four column presentation with the budget in the first column, the final budget encompassing any transfers and amendments in the second column. The third column is the actual results. And the fourth column is the variance between the final budget and the actual results. You could see when the budget was adopted, it was anticipated three million nine hundred forty-seven thousand dollars would be collected. The actual revenue is three million seven hundred twenty-seven thousand. That's two hundred and twenty thousand less than you anticipated collecting. I'll take you through some of the details of that in the next slide. On the expenditure side of the budget, you anticipated four million two hundred ninety-seven thousand of expenditures. Four billion three hundred thirteen thousand. So you were right, you were really pretty much right on the nose with the expenditure side of the budget. Going despite like... You also budgeted and made a transfer of forty thousand dollars to the Capital Projects Fund. What was used to balance the budget in the amount of three hundred ninety thousand, that was fund balance used to balance the 2020 budget. So when you, when the board adopted the budget, it anticipated that its fund balance for the general fund would decrease by that three hundred ninety thousand. Because the actual results were different from the budget. There was actually a loss of six hundred and twenty-six thousand. Meaning that you, you, you took three hundred ninety thousand as you anticipated, and you fell short on the revenue side of the budget by a total of two hundred and thirty-six thousand. The difference, the two combined, is the total drop in fund balance for fiscal year 2020. So we started the year with fund balance of two million three hundred forty-six thousand, ending fund balances one million seven hundred nineteen thousand. I'll take you through some of the details on how that happened. This is a little more detail on the revenue side of the budget. Just a few items I'll highlight, obviously, 2020 is the year of the pandemic. Definitely an unusual year. You'll see in real property taxes, these are real property tax collections greater than the budget. So not only do you levy the current year budget of seven hundred seventy-six thousand, any amounts that you collect on back taxes also fall to revenue. And that amount was greater than the budget, so you exceeded the budget by two hundred and seventy-five thousand in the real property tax line. That's compared to 2019, where you actually fell short, you collected less in delinquent taxes. So you had much less property tax revenue to realize in 2019. The tax items consist mostly of interest and penalties on real property taxes and gains and sale of ex-acquired property. The shortfall, the bulk of the shortfall was due to the town not holding its annual sale on foreclosed properties. The budget for that line item was three hundred and fifty thousand, and you didn't sell anything at a game. So all of that was a deficiency in the budget. You did do a little bit better on interest and penalties on real property taxes. That was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand better than the budget. But when you net all those things together, the shortfall is two hundred and fifty-four thousand. Departmental income, mostly that shortfall is in the Crawford Park fees. Pandemic, the, you know, park not being open, not only the town of Rye, most municipalities that we've been reviewing has faced similar type revenue shortfalls for 2020. You can see, those are the, those are the three largest line items that net down to the two hundred and twenty thousand net shortfall for the year in revenues. Moving on to the expenditures, you can see there's more detail within this category, but general government support is the largest of them and covers most of the town's administrative functions. Was just under the budget of twenty thousand dollars. And you can see the other budget categories really were very close to the original budget with nothing really exceeding or falling short throughout the year. Which means, you know, the town's doing a good job at estimating the amount of appropriations it needs. So what does that leave us with? That leaves us with the fund balance. This is 2019 compared to 2020. You can see the total fund balance was two million three hundred twenty-eight thousand at the end of 2019. At the end of 2020, we're at one million seven hundred and nineteen thousand. The number, the second number from the top, assigned for the subsequent year's budget, four hundred thousand dollars, means that the town utilized four hundred thousand of its fund balance to balance the 2021 adopted budget. So similarly to 2020, where you utilized or anticipated utilizing three hundred ninety thousand. Again, in 2020, or in 2021, rather, that figures four hundred thousand. What that leaves in fund balance is what we refer to as unassigned fund balance. That's essentially a residual fund balance classification, if you take the total fund balance and subtract out the other categories. It's available for use at the discretion of the board, so it's available for any, any needs of the town. One common metric that we look at as it relates to unassigned fund balance is the percentage of that unassigned fund balance to your next year's or subsequent year's adopted budget. You can see in 2019, that number was forty-four percent. Keep in, it was a big jump in the budget year over year here between nineteen, I'm sorry, between twenty and twenty-one. That number, between the drop in the unassigned fund balance and the increase in the budget, the percentage amount drops to twenty-two percent, down from forty-four percent. Half of that, that drop is because of the increase in the size of the budget in 2021. Moving on, just a summary of some of the long-term obligations of the town. There's just obligation bonds outstanding of six hundred, six million three hundred ninety thousand with interest at three percent. And other than that, there's only a bond anticipation note. And that is seven point one million. That note was initially, originally issued in 2019 and rolled over into 2020 at seven point one million. So leaving you with total outstanding capital debt of the thirteen million four hundred ninety thousand. With that said, those are the highlights we wanted to go through. If there's any questions from the board, any more detail you'd like us to go through, or if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions from the council? I didn't think so.
It was a very thorough report.
Very, very well done. And I want to commend our accountants, especially Kathy Hamel and Dave Burns. Are terrific controls. Dave's not with us tonight, is he Deb? He's under the weather.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, so he does a terrific job and we're blessed to have him. One, one bit of good news that came in today. Our mortgage recording tax number for the first half came in. Right, Mr. Mecca?
Yes, sir, it was nice and healthy.
Yep, we, I think it was by recollection, it was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars or so over, over last year's collection at this point. Which is very, very good.
Cause he keeps up.
Yeah. It'll be a good, good year.
I do have one request of the auditors. Is it possible to get a PDF of the presentation?
We have it.
Oh, we do, okay, great.
It's actually, I believe it's in the agenda.
It is in the agenda.
Yeah, it's uploaded to the agenda. So that I sent you, so you could print it out.
Okay. Excellent job Scott, excellent job Jeff. We need to accept the report. We have a motion and a second to accept the auditor's report.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed, thank you.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
See you guys next...
Thank you.
See you guys next year. Except for you Scott, I'll see you.
See you the neighborhood.
You're on the corner.
All right. We now have the highlight of the evening. A public hearing on proposed projects for Crawford Park. Debbie Hope, we need to change the heading. Crawford Park and Rye Town Park. Not Crawford Park and Crawford Community Center. Okay?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing.
Sound moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, this, this public hearing is required under the Community Development Block Grant Program. We are entering a new three-year CDBG cycle in which the Town of Rye is a member of the Westchester County urban urban county consortium is entitled to submit grant applications under the CDBG program, which would result if granted in a fifty percent reimbursement by the county with funds administered by HUD. And it is on a three-year cycle. The last cycle was 2018. For grants, that would be in effect for 2019, 20 and 21. This cycle is for grants that will be in effect from twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. Each community is entitled to submit up to four grants. Any grant can be no more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have with us our CDAG representative, Marcella Kistner. Who is with her husband Tom, Wade Marcella. CDAG stands for, I keep forgetting, Community Development. Debbie, help me.
Oh boy. I'm going to have to look it up, I can't remember. Advisory Group.
Group.
Community Development Advisory Group.
Helen was waving her hand. Like Jeopardy.
I got it, yay!
Community Development Advisory Group. Every community who is a member of the consortium has to have a citizen who is our CDAG and it's person cannot be an elected official or an employee of the town. And Marcella has graciously consented to be our CDAG and she has been apprised of these projects. I'm going to step aside a bit. Debbie, do you want to take it from here? Do you want to ask Marcella to explain anything? Or do you want to take the explanation?
Well, I thought I would walk you through our three requests that we're preparing to submit to the Community Development Block Grant. I would say that Tom and Marcella and I met last week. And I gave them a, I briefed them on what we were thinking. We've pared down some of our thinking since then, but I think what you're going to see is pretty close, although not identical to what we discussed last time. So the first application we will be making is to, for ADA compliant recreation and exercise facilities at Crawford Park. So specifically, what we mean by that is we are proposing to put accessible exercise equipment into, onto small exercise pads located along the Crawford Park Trail. So this is an example of what we have in mind. So various equipment that are accessible to adults and adults with disabilities and seniors to get out and get some exercise. So that's one piece of our application. The next piece of our application is, as you're aware, we went to bid on a bocce court facility. And we, specifically, they were designed, well, one court was specifically designed, and the others can be as well, to be accessible. Which is why our illustration of our bocce courts have people with disabilities and wheelchairs and, you know, basically families being able to use those, but completely accessible to people with disabilities. So that's our, oh, I just realized, I didn't share my screen. There we are, that's what it looks like. So that's a rendering of what we envision the bocce facility will be, which is a place where people with disabilities are fully empowered to participate in healthy outdoor recreation. The package of the, the application number two is a, it's called ADA compliant mats, making the water's edge at Oakland Beach accessible for seniors, with seniors and individuals with disabilities. And what we propose to apply for are these. So we have several proposals that we are collecting. In aggregate, these mats are not very expensive, but they are key. So we've now just completed, or just completing ADA accessible path that leads from the main bathroom building at Rye Town Park to the promenade and ramps that lead from the promenade to the sand. But someone in a wheelchair or other people who, who need assistance in walking, like children in baby carriages can't get to the water to swim, which is a very healthy outdoor recreation. So what we propose to do is apply for a CDBG grant to enable us to get this conveyance to, from the sand across and into the water to enable people to swim. And we are all... Um, and, uh, we are also going to be applying for application number three. Our tunnel bathrooms, creating ADA compliant beach level toilets at Oakland Beach. So the, um, you'll see in this screen that this is a picture of our beach and you will see, can everybody see this? It's kind of small. I can make it larger. Can everyone see the tunnel? I'll make it a little bigger. At least I thought I would make it bigger. That doesn't seem to be doing any good. Um.
You did make it bigger, but you only got half of the, uh,
Yeah, I couldn't miss it. So there, uh, there you see, there is a person walking into the ladies' tunnel, which leads to a ladies' bathroom, um, which is actually under this roof. And there is the men's tunnel, which leads to the men's bathroom, which is under this roof, so to speak, and, or, yeah, I think so. Um, the problem that we have is that the stairway in the men's tunnel, which leads to, uh, the bathroom, which is not accessible, uh, is, uh, so decayed that it, it is not safe to use. So we have closed the tunnel so that nobody can hurt themselves on the stairs. The problem is then there's no beach level bathroom, which is a real crisis for people with disabilities because it, in order to use facilities, they have to completely leave the beach and go up to the bathhouse. Um, we, the, the staff was preparing to replace the stairs. In fact, we were, we were ready to go out to bid. And in a psych visit, uh, last week, uh, the supervisor observed that to spend well over a hundred thousand dollars to replace steel stairs leading to a non-accessible bathroom, pardon me.
Two hundred, two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand dollars to lead to a, a non-accessible bathroom, which is in terrible shape, is really a stupid use of funds. Um, and therefore, instead of throwing, um, and by the way, there would be no grant money for that at all. So the, um, solution is, uh, to move up a project. Can everybody see the floor plan now? Yes. Okay, so the solution is, um, a, a project that we had in mind, but we're going to wait for future years has been accelerated. And that is, instead of replacing the stairs, we're getting rid of them entirely and to use the available space at the end of the tunnel to create acc- an accessible men's room and an accessible women's room. And that way, people with disabilities will have a hygienic place, um, that they can take advantage of on the beach. And, uh, we will, this is a, a, a grant, which is, uh, our, our, pardon me, our architect estimates that this will be about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. And, uh, if we were to get this grant, uh, the grant would cover half the cost, leaving the park commission with, um, also half, leaving basically a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, if I'm doing my math right, um, which is essentially what the stairs would have cost in the first place and giving us a far better solution. So those are our three, uh, grant applications.
So you'd be getting rid of the stairs and putting a ramp in its place?
No, we would get rid of the stairs. That bathroom would be, um, essentially the, it would be used by staff only from the, who can enter it, um, from the tower building. And we would put brand-new accessible bathrooms on the sand level. So that there would be no need to change levels. They would be flat.
Okay, be flat. So it's the, the stair, there will be no stairs?
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be low. Okay.
Yeah, and, and Tommy, just to address the plumber in you?
Yeah.
There would be an ejector pump.
Oh, I hate those things. I know, but it's nee- it's needed. I know.
Yeah.
We have the plumbing there. It's just.
Yeah, it's gotta be pumped up, yeah. And then you just gotta make sure it's, you know, you gotta have everything pitched so it's, you know, uh, water line so it can be winterized easily. Sorry about that. I got the window open. But yeah, it's, uh, it'd be, it'd be good this way. And then what do you do with the other woman's room? That, that would be stay, staying the way it is for now?
For now, there are no resources for that particular need right now. Um, what we have is a crisis.
Yeah.
That needs to be addressed and we can solve a number of problems by, in this way.
Now, with the ramps that you plan on doing to go down to the beach, would you have like a ramp somewhere going up to the restroom too, or no?
Well, the, the ramps that are now being installed, um, that's not part of this grant, because they will be needed.
I think you were talking about the beach mats.
The beach mats, rather, the beach mats. I'm sorry.
You know something? We did not anticipate. This is a new thought, which is a really good one. Which is, we, we, we have measured the mats from each ramp, the south and the middle, down to the waters, to the waterline.
Yes.
We could absolutely think about providing a mat that would enable them to reach the bathrooms.
Yeah, it, it might be something to look into because we're putting ramps down and that you're putting the mats down to bring them down to the beach, then you're gonna make a, uh, a universal uh, restroom area. But then you, how do you, if somebody's in a wheelchair, how are they gonna go through the sand to get to, to the restroom unless you have the mats? Maybe it might be a good idea at the top of the, at the top of, um, where they enter the beach, as soon as they come down and enter the sand, maybe go from there and then make a cutaway. So it's that all the way in the top, not in the bottom, not in the middle, but all the way to the top. So this way they just have to walk up and then walk across. You know, go with the wheelchairs up and across to the restrooms.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I actually did bring this up to the vendor today.
Mm-hmm.
And that he'd be back to look at that.
Yeah, uh, you know, we should do it towards, like I said, all the way up towards the top, so it doesn't take away from the beach. Now, the other thing I was.
Actually, that's gonna be great, because that will enable them to reach the, um, snack bar also.
Yes, exactly.
That's great.
Um, the other thing I was thinking, with some of these mats, now people are gonna come down, they're gonna go swimming and stuff, they might wanna rest somewhere. And it might be awkward for the, you know, wheelchair to go, because we're trying to make it so people, wheelchairs can go. Are we gonna do like little pods off the ramp so they can have a little sitting area? You know, a couple of those.
Tommy, write, Tommy, write all of these down. Helen?
Deb, Gary, if you look at the pictures Sebastian sent, on the one that's got the, um, vertical and horizontal walkway, there are areas that are bulging out for sitting areas and stuff like that.
Yeah, because not, not everybody's gonna go to the beach to go in the water. They're gonna come down, they wanna join the sunshine, they're gonna wanna, they wanna just be down there, but they wanna be near the water. So they have little, these little pods on either side, you know, this way they have little sitting areas.
Well, I think, okay, I think that for purposes of the application, Helen, when you send in the design, not only the pictures, but I think that Vic, uh, work with Tommy and figure out exactly that. The mats, the mats themselves are not that expensive. We're figuring, uh, about fifty thousand dollars for the run from the, am I correct Vic?
Um, actually, um, when I got the price back from Access Rest Rec for both runs, it was about twenty-one thousand dollars.
No.
Yes.
No, really?
Yes.
I thought it was, I, I don't know. I, I read it differently.
The other one.
I thought that was a deposit. It doesn't matter. They're not, we're gonna be asking for the money for the grant and uh, the original thought obviously was to go from the end of the ramp to the water. But then the secondary was, okay, you're at the end, what do you do? So then you would have a T, so you could go left or right. And now you're adding on something I think that's really, really good, which is to, to make it accessible to the, to the bathroom and to have sitting areas, because, um, you know, compared to the other projects, this one is, uh, you know, this is relatively inexpensive and yet does a great deal of good.
Now, will these be up all year round, or are they just seasonal and then we take them down?
Seasonal.
Yeah, they would have to be seasonal.
Yeah, no, I would prefer that because that would, we wouldn't lose it.
We're gonna store them in your house, Lindsay.
The, these are sectional, these, these are sectional mats, aren't they?
Yeah, they are.
They're sectional mats. So then, uh, it looks like there's two different companies, because the one that you showed before looked like, uh, it, it looked like a little different ramp than this one that you're showing now. The first picture that you had shown with the handy, with the, uh, handicap sign on it.
Gary, I'm looking at Access Rec's quote of twenty thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
For both?
For both.
I looked at a different quote. I have to re-read the email.
Are there, are there different thicknesses of this, of this material, or is it?
Different widths.
Different widths, okay. But the thicknesses are the same?
Yes.
Okay. Um, would they just place it on top of the sand, or they have to put any, any kind of, uh, material underneath it?
Nothing underneath, right on.
Just, just right on top of the sand, okay. So that makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering, on the edges of them, uh, being that they're sectionals, um, because I know with some of the mats that we, we do it, um, well, I don't, you know, with dog training, it's basically, it looks like the same type of mat, and then they have edge pieces that go on it. So it looks like those mats can go long and then you can put the sections on later if you wanted to.
Yeah.
Because it's like a big puzzle. It's like a big puzzle.
Yes.
Okay, so even if it's something that we did the runs first to get them going, and then later on, by the, do the path, do the little pods off the, off the main run, we can do that later. We can attach them on. Just take the end pieces off and put the, put the side pieces on if we wanted, the, the sitting areas.
Hey Deb, how do I share my screen? I could show you what.
You, um, go down to, um, the bottom of your screen. Is there a green icon for share screen?
Green icon, yes.
Yeah, right in the center.
Click on that and then, uh, uh, the alternative screens that are available to you will shut, will pop up. And then double click. There you go.
Does that?
Okay, exactly. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, you know, I'm just saying, if we don't have the money off, the, the main thing is getting the, to me, I think the main thing is getting them down to the beach and getting them to the restrooms. To me, that's the most important. Then if we, if we want, you know, the, uh, the following year, then start putting money aside or, or, or grant money uh, and do the, do the sitting areas. We should be able to attach.
Well, Tommy, Tommy, first of all, at, at this price, we could plan it out and do it at one. Okay, Vic, Vic, I have to correct you. There, there are two, two estimates. One is for twenty-one and one is for about thirteen.
Yes, one's a six-foot mat and one's a ten-foot wide.
Oh, I thought there were the two.
No.
Two separate estimates.
You're, you're looking at the ten-foot wide, right? What is, yeah, the ten-foot wide. Okay.
I thought the two estimates were one for the mid-ramp and one for the, uh, okay.
Okay.
It was clear. All right. But either way, either way, when you put on all the extras, you're talking about a thirty thousand dollar, maybe thirty-five thousand dollar ask at the top. And hopefully the program will pay for half of that. So we'll be able to, to get them, to get the, the design that we want and make, make the beach totally accessible to, to everybody.
Yeah, I think it'd be, I think there's a good, a very good idea to do in that.
Thomas.
I'm here on mute.
Hey, uh, I have a question about this. Uh, when we sent this wrap, this, uh, mat down to the water's edge, um, does it go into the water? Because you have the tide going in and out.
No.
No.
No, it's going to high tide, to the high tide line.
All right.
Yeah, because if, if it went to the water, I would imagine it would start popping up, because you have no real way of holding it down. I don't think there's any real way of holding it in.
It would also be a safety issue based on tide.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, um.
If you go down to the Jersey Shore or into Delaware's beaches, none of them go into the, into the water.
Yeah.
Right. Any, any other, any other comments from the council on any of the grants?
I just suggest we all go to the Jersey Shore to see how, you know, they have it set up.
There we go.
Field trip.
Someone's there, crazy. No, I think they're great ideas for accessibility on the beach and it's definitely extending the ADA compliance that the town has already invested in, as such a local landmark. So it's important, it's important work.
Um, all right, do we have any comments from members of the public? This is a public hearing. Anybody on Facebook or live streaming? Anybody else who's joined the meeting who wants to speak on this?
Um, there are no comments on Facebook.
Okay. Um, Marcel, want to say anything?
No, I, I, I'm happy to, to help you with my sign.
Thank you.
It's very, yeah, it's very interesting that trip projects. Very, will be very nice, that part.
It will be.
The community will be happy.
That's what we want.
Exactly.
Happy residents.
Yeah.
All right, if nothing else, uh, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Sound moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Terrific. Okay, uh, our next item is the resolution that reflects the public hearing. Uh, a resolution to, uh, to authorize a grant application to, uh, the Urban County Consortium for uh, CDBG funding for ADA compliant facilities at both Crawford Park and Rye Town Park. Um, I think the, the motion speaks for itself. Um, I would just like to point out again, in it earlier, the, uh, the amount not to exceed is two fifty, that's what we're, that's what we're authorizing. But the actual amounts in the application, when we give estimates, will be, uh, as, as we're, as we stated. The, uh, the mats will be less than fifty thousand dollars and the, uh, the bathrooms will probably be around three hundred and fifty thousand. And the Crawford Park facilities will probably be, certainly be under two hundred thousand for what we're doing there. So with that, may I have a, a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion. I'll sound second.
Uh, Hope?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson?
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi? Counselperson Nardi?
You're on mute, Tommy.
Sorry, yes.
And Supervisor Circumvent.
Yes, we should do that all the time to you, huh? All right, and I, I we previously retained Helen Thurston to write grants for us, and Helen is with us and has participated. Uh, in case anybody didn't notice. Say hello, Helen.
Hey Helen.
Hi.
Hi Helen.
Hi, I just wanna say how nice it is to see everybody. I know some of you. Hi, I just want to say how nice it is to see everybody. I know some of you, I know Vic and I know Camille and I know Hope and of course Debbie and Gary and um, we've done very well with C-DAG and we've, we've had some good conversations with them recently and uh, these are meaningful um, uh, support for people with disabilities. So um, I look forward to working with you and Marcel, very nice to meet you. I'm, I know that you will be signing the application, so thank you so much. If you all have any questions for me on, on this, I've, I've now uh, gone through one cycle, this is the second cycle for the uh, CDBG grants and um, you know, the challenge is always that Rye is not in a low, um, moderate income zip code. So we have to sort of jump through hoops to explain the proportion of senior citizens and individuals with disabilities that will use these facilities. And I'm very grateful to be able to work with you all to come up with the statistics that prove our case.
I just have to correct you on one thing. Rye is in a low mod area. The Portchester portion of the town of Rye certainly is. Uh, Crawford Park is located in a different area. So, in the Rye Brook area, so um, that, that makes the qualification on low mod more difficult and that's the reason why we're pitching everything towards accessibility.
Yes.
Plus, and especially senior accessibility.
Yes.
That qualifies us for the program.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why, for example, um, uh, you may wonder if we can apply for four grants while we're only doing three. Uh, we could apply for a lot more but we wouldn't qualify. For example, we got the Sam Grant uh, uh, state aid to municipalities that's funded through the Doratory Authority uh, for um, the fields at Crawford Park and also for the path that's being renovated which will hopefully house our accessible exercise equipment. But neither of those qualify under accessibility. Of course, the fields are obviously used for youth, um, and the, and the path is not truly accessible because of the slope of Crawford Park. So we don't qualify, we, we don't qualify for a lot of things that we'd like to get money for. So Helen has been expert at threading the needle. Saying, what do we need to do to qualify to get money? And so far, we've been reasonably successful, not a hundred percent but, but we can't complain. And everything that we've, we've got, we've put to um, to very good use. So with that, I guess um, we've passed the resolution, we're on to uh, our reports. Denise, our assessor, is at grievance day. Um, Crawford Park. Camille, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I do, Gary. Um, I think Debbie is going to share the screen. Just want to take you through um, some of the incredible activity we're experiencing um, at Crawford. Um, I went through uh, last week, the last month rather, and shared with you that we had now have a new online booking system that is really um, helping us um, get through all of the contracts that we need to create as well as giving us a lot of um, analytics. So tonight I want to share with you a couple of categories. Um, bookings, uh, April to date and inquiries, we've had a tremendous amount of inquiries. Uh, we're up to a hundred and seventy-one. Last month, when I reported the number of leads that we had gotten, it was at seventy, so we're up a hundred in the past four weeks. Um, the past four weeks, we've sent out thirty-five proposals. We have sixty-one bookings, um, which actually equate to two hundred and thirty-three event days. And by that, I mean, we have a number of contracts that have multiple dates. So for example, the Rye Brook Youth Soccer League, it's one contract that they've booked multiple dates for the next six to eight weeks. So that's where we come up with that number. Um, as far as revenue, uh, to date, we have had eighty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars paid uh, to the town for events. We have, with all the proposals and uh, contracts we have out, we currently have a hundred and fourteen thousand in pending revenue. Um, so we're looking at, at this point, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, um, which considering we cleared twenty thousand last year, um, this is, I think this is very exciting. Um, and we've also had a number of municipal um, events and uh, calculating that out, we've waived the fee for about thirty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, as far as who's using the park, I thought it would be interesting to show the percentage of bookings by uh, patron category as well as the uh, percentage of revenue. So as you can see, of course, Town of Rye is sixty-three percent of the bookings and of course sixty-eight percent of the revenue. Um, non-residents, twenty-two percent, thirty percent of the revenue. Municipal is at nine percent of the bookings and the nonprofit organizations are at seven percent of the bookings with two percent of the revenue. Um, in terms of what these folks are um, reserving, the mansion has been twenty-eight percent of the reservations with thirty-five percent of the overall revenue coming from the mansion rentals. And then the pavilion and sports fields um, are at seventy-two percent of the booking. The seven, sixty-five percent of the revenue. Um, we have had a number of um, organizations approach us, sports organizations, to reserve the field, so that's doing very well for us. Uh, as I mentioned before, we have the um, Rye Brook Youth Soccer League uh, and we also have a new soccer organization out of White Plains that will be reserving come the fall. So we have a lot going on. Um, so that, are there any questions with any of the numbers that?
Yes, yes, Camille, I just have a quick question about um, when you go up and you talk about revenue, the revenue waived for the twenty-seven events, do we have an idea of what categories they fit into and?
Yes. Those are municipal um, bookings which are either government or education. So we've had, for example, we've had some school-sponsored events um, for um, awards night and things like that. Um, we have a booking with the fire department that's coming up, that's included in there. So it's any of our municipal organizations that choose to use Crawford for their meetings or their events.
Camille, are you including uh, election day polling place as well?
Um, actually, election day um, is not in this number, but it will be for next month's.
Can we possibly?
Go ahead.
Get a list offline of those twenty-seven events?
You sure can, be happy to do that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Absolutely. And uh, in keeping with the Town of Rye's event policy, um, we have a group um, that would like to um, reserve the park and its amenities um, in August and it will be for about five hundred people. So I am presenting that to you to see if everyone is aligned with that. Um, it it is a very um, wonderful organization, it's WestMed and this is for their employees only, not families, just the employees. They want to have an outing. Um, and it would be absolutely incredible uh, exposure for Crawford.
I think it's great.
Thank you, me too.
I like it, what, how, what would they do about cars? Five hundred people?
Leave that to me, Tom. And leave it to me, I've done it before with uh, Ronald McDonald House, we had over four hundred people.
Okay.
It's gonna valet them all.
I'm gonna valet them all.
Okay.
Or by myself.
And you know you can do it.
This time, they're all gonna be parking at Tommy's house.
Tommy's house.
Actually, um, when I was meeting with the, with the uh, folks from WestMed this past week, one of the things that I was concerned for them, you know, is we'd be able to accommodate the cars for this many people. Um, and I assured them we, we could after having a conversation with Vic. Um, but I also suggested to them that perhaps they want to have buses come from each of their locations throughout Westchester and Fairfield, so that is something they are taking uh, into consideration.
Okay.
But it will be an event that will pretty much take up the entire park. Uh, the great lawn, the circle, uh, the, the lawn behind the mansion and probably one or two of the sports fields. Uh, we're probably going to uh, meet with them in a week or so, now that we have the approval and work through the details for the event, so I'll keep you posted on that, but we are really thrilled to be able to have this type of exposure uh, throughout Westchester and Fairfield.
Let me just ask one thing, uh, I don't think we, did we take a formal vote on that? I know we're all in favor of it.
Um, we didn't yet, no.
No, let's take a formal vote. The, the policy requires approval when it's over a certain amount. Motion and a, and a second, please.
I'll make it. Go ahead, Lindsay.
I'll second.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, hope you'll title it.
Thank you.
Approval.
Very excited.
Approval of WestMed event on whatever date, Camille.
It will be in August and I will be more than happy to share the date with all of you. Um, come join us, it's going to be quite an event, I mean, I think we may want to um, you know, think about doing something in terms of signage, welcoming healthcare workers, etc., so still in the
I think that's a very good idea.
We're still thinking through these details, but I think um, the fact that we're gonna have an opportunity to thank the healthcare workers is gonna be wonderful. And of course unbeknownst to them, but we will do something to recognize all their efforts in the past year and a half.
Good.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Camille.
Thank you.
Alright. Uh, Davy's not here and um, I just want to say something in terms of uh, finance, the receivables. Jeff Binder and I have been working diligently to collect the outstanding arrears of uh, the delinquent taxpayers. And um, I think it shows in the financial statement that uh, Jeff and Scott presented uh, how we've collected more money uh, over over the budgeted amount because we have been very, very diligent in pursuing the arrears uh, through interim foreclosure and Nick sending out timely arrears notices and um, we're basically doing pretty well in that regard. The amount of arrears is coming down substantially, the number of delinquent taxpayers is down substantially. And um, and that's a good thing for the rest of the taxpayers because uh, they don't have to, you know, that, that will help keep the tax rate lower uh, when everybody's paying their, their taxes as, as they're supposedly scheduled to do. Right, Nicholas?
Yes, sir, excuse me, and speaking of that, the village taxes are due by June thirtieth. Portchester and Rye Brook, we do not collect mamaranic. So you should have the bill with no problem, it's out there online if you need, and if any problems, please contact our office, we're there to help you and answer any questions that you have, but please try and get your money in by June thirtieth. Thank you.
You're very welcome and thank you very much, Nick. That was a perfect segue that I gave you.
Yes, it was, thank you.
Um, Jeff, do you have anything?
Uh, no, nothing other than I continue to work with you to collect taxes.
Indeed we do, okay, uh, town clerk's report is submitted, Hope, you're ready? Yeah.
Yes, um, since our meet, our next meeting is July twentieth, uh, the municipal, not the municipal, the county shredder will be coming to two twenty-two Grace Church Street, Parkama on Jul-, Saturday, July tenth from ten AM to one PM. And residents are encouraged to come and bring anything that they would like to have shredded. It's a nice service that comes from the county of Westchester.
Very sustainable, can we get that up on the website and across our social media?
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Um, this is, this is only for shreddable, this is paid. Okay, this, not, not recyclables, you know, that's at the, the other, the, the other county uh, days that they have that, that's the one once a year they have at Playland and some other places. Right, Lindsay?
That's DEF, not us.
Gary, I keep trying to get my husband to give up his like boxes and boxes of twenty-year-old papers and go to the shredder events. Someday I will be successful. Lawyers, man, lawyers.
I, I know, I have my own. I was at the last one, I brought four or five boxes worth, but you know, a drop in the bucket. Drop in the bucket.
You're all crazy people.
I know. Alright.
Advantage of July tenth.
Thank you, Hope. Uh, alright. Uh, prior to adjournment, does anybody have anything they wish to say?
Yeah, I do.
Time?
I do, the uh, I would like to report that the African-American Cemetery uh, is our, our new sign is, has been installed.
Yay. Oh Debbie, it's gorgeous, Vic, thank you.
You're welcome.
It is a great pleasure and, and, and about time, so we're, we're thrilled. Um, it will be much easier now for people who are visiting the African-American Cemetery to actually find it. And um, I would also tell you that the World Monument Fund Job Training Program is underway. That is our, the president of the Friends of the African-American Cemetery, David Thomas, with uh, our two craftsmen. And on that, on that particular day, the photo was taken, we had one apprentice. Uh, on Tuesday, that's today, we have uh, three. Vic, is that correct?
Let's do it, three.
And uh, I understand that they have now repaired one hundred monuments, is that correct?
That's right.
So tomorrow is official visiting day, um, uh, so I, I want to extend an invitation um, to counsel people to visit. Um, this is the day that um, they're willing to be interviewed and photographed and um, um, they're gone by one, so I would actively recommend if you want to drop by that you do so. You can be there as early as eight AM and uh, they, they leave at one.
Debbie, Sunday is also an observance, isn't it, or?
That is Juneteenth, yes, absolutely true, thank you for the reminder. Um, this is a um, an observance that's being uh, organized by the Friends of the African-American Cemetery. Yes.
And I believe it's at ten AM, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes. Is that Saturday or Sunday?
Sunday.
Sunday.
Okay, I had it wrong on my calendar.
Hmm.
I'm
Looking at my calendar. Every day there's African-American Cemetery on my calendar, so.
Yeah, I know, I know, of course they've been working every day, whoever, whoever
I have the commemoration on Saturday, the nineteenth.
You are right, it's Saturday.
Cause Sunday is Father's Day.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Just me going out to Long Island a little later.
Yeah, I have it in my calendar for Saturday too, at ten o'clock.
Perfect, we shall be there.
Yeah, cause that's Juneteenth, so.
Right. So I, I think that um, you know, I think that this is a great event and what uh, I, I think we all should be really proud for encouraging the, the monument people I, I think we all should be really proud for encouraging the, the monument people to come in. And I don't see the Westmore news.
Will they be there on Wednesday?
All right, I was going to suggest that, that somebody get in touch with them so they could take pictures.
Yes, that, that's been done. They'll be there. And I also believe that he's been in touch with the right record. I have not had a chance to reach out to News 12.
If you send me the information, Debbie, I can forward to the Simon desk. Happy to do that. And speaking of News 12, I just wanted to thank Gary and Lindsay and Debbie and the entire council for amazing pride celebration we had, which News 12 did come out and do beautiful coverage of. But Gary, I was honored and pleased and excited and thrilled when he said it's going to be yearly. So thank you.
And congratulations to all the work you did, Pam, as well.
Organization, you and I kind of.
I said it before.
With Debbie and got it done.
I said it, I, I said it to them privately. I'll say it publicly in the meeting. You know, this thing was pulled together so quickly. And I knew it would be a success because the job was given to Lindsay and Pam and Debbie.
Sarah.
From, from the, the city of Rye and Amanda Timken from from Pride. And that group of women just put it together in two seconds, boom, boom, boom. And it was beautiful, beautifully done. And, and you're all to be congratulated.
I love the students. I love their spirit.
You know, and everybody participated. The students were great. And thank you for the entire council supporting it. I think it was a great event. So on that happy note, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Father's Day. Yes, happy Father's Day.
Father's Day and happy 4th of July.